Everyone, hello. Thank you so much for being here today. My name is Armita.
And my name is Bee.
And we are co-presidents of Dartmouth Civics.
Thank you, everyone, folks from Dartmouth, folks from the town, for joining us for tonight's program, which is Hanover Demystified, a candidate forum and information session. And we're sponsored tonight by the Nelson A. Rockefeller Center for Public Policy in the Social Sciences, and we, of course, are from Dartmouth Civics.
So at Dartmouth Civics, we strive to provide both students and the broader Upper Valley community with the tools they need to be engaged in our community.
As you may or may not know, Hanover Town Meeting is coming up very quickly this Tuesday, May 14th, and we hope that you leave tonight with more information about Town Meeting and the different candidates who are running for town positions.
At this event, we will first hear from, we will first hear about the basics of Town Meeting with Hanover Town Manager Alex Torpe. Next, Dartmouth Student Government Vice President Kiar Ortiz will moderate a question-and-answer session with all of the candidates. Toward the end of today's afternoon programming, we will welcome audience Q and A. When we get to the Q and A portion of our program, we're going to have a microphone available for our in-person audience questions. If you are joining us remotely, please submit your questions by emailing rockyqandae@dartmouth.edu.
The last portion of tonight is an open house where folks joining us in person can meet representatives from different town departments. So thank you again to everyone, and especially to the Rockefeller Center, Junction Arts Media, and our friends at Dartmouth Student Government for making this event possible. And with that being said, please join us in welcoming Alex Torpe, Hanover's Town Manager, to the stage.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing? Excited to talk a little bit about town government, I hope, because you've got about a 60- to 90-minute presentation here for me. Just kidding, just kidding. There's a clock right there. Okay, so what we're going to do a little bit tonight is what I'm going to talk about is a little bit of an overview just about how municipal government in New Hampshire and in Hanover is put together, and talk a little bit about Town Meeting, and kind of try to keep it pretty short. There are a couple of handouts if you do want to learn more. So when we get to the informal portion, or when you're leaving, if you look at the table back there under the bulletin board, you'll see a 101 kind of sheet, and this has got some information about how town government and Town Meeting work. There's also a bunch of links on these documents, so if you do want to go online and find a lot more information, such as our Town Report, which is a little bit lengthier, and I'm going to talk about in a minute, you can do that as well. So there's a lot of resources online on the website if you do want to go into further details about anything that we're going to kind of cover tonight. So municipal government in New Hampshire, municipal government in any state basically falls down into two different categories. I'm going to run through a couple kind of important notes about municipal government, try to contextualize a little bit what Town Meeting is and means. So states fall into two different categories. There is something called home rule, and there's something called Dillon Rule. A home-rule state is a state where the local government is allowed to make any rule or law that has not been explicitly prohibited by a county or state government. New Hampshire and Vermont as well are Dillon Rule states, which means that we are more of an instrumentality of the state of New Hampshire, and we are only allowed to act in areas where we have legislative authorization from the state of New Hampshire. So those actually are two very different ways of governing, and they have some kind of important pros and cons, as we might get into some more details. Like other levels of government, there are multiple branches of government at the local level. From a judicial perspective, it's really done through the state. We don't really have our own court system, except when it comes to certain zoning matters, Hanover does have a zoning board of adjustment that does adjudicate certain matters that we could consider judicial. And of course, like the state and federal government, we also have our executive and legislative branches. The executive branch of your government at the local level in Hanover is your select board and town manager, and your legislative branch is primarily Town Meeting, which is what we're all here to kind of talk a little bit more about. So although the select board has certain areas of purview where they can make laws, and the planning board also has certain areas of purview, really the ultimate authority in town government in New Hampshire and in our form of government in Hanover is Town Meeting, and that's really important. In New Hampshire, of course, as most of us probably know, but may not, is we don't have a very strong or very large county government, so there's a bunch of stuff done at the state level, there's a little bit done at the county level, and there's a lot done at the local level. And that's also really important in thinking about how certain things work in Hanover and in the region. Town Meeting is a very old form of government. It has been practiced in New England and New Hampshire for almost, or over, 400 years, and that is a pretty cool thing. It is one of the most direct democracy forms of government in the entire world, that we all get to participate here in Hanover and in New Hampshire, which is pretty cool. Town government in Hanover does a whole bunch of different things. There's kind of two different areas. One is what we relate to and then what we provide directly. There is a directory that is also available in the back. It sort of looks like this, and this lists out all the town departments and their contact information. I'm not going to run through all of them, but there's a lot the town provides directly from a service perspective, but there's also a lot of areas where we don't provide it directly as a town government, but we work with other stakeholders and entities. So a really good example of that is Advanced Transit. How many people have taken Advanced Transit here? A great service, and if you recall, they just expanded the hours this year thanks to some increased financial support from a lot of the towns, so we have two-hour later service during the week and Saturday service, which we continue, hope to continue going in that direction. Advanced Transit is a great example of a key service, but it's obviously not provided directly by the town government, but it is provided by a nonprofit that actually works in both New Hampshire and Vermont, and we support that. So there are a couple different ways that you can be involved in town government, and again, there's just a few of these ideas on this sheet, which you can grab a copy of on your way out. So one, and sort of the easiest thing, is just staying up to date on things that are happening. So how many people listen to podcasts? I do, a couple people. All right, so we do have a Hanover Town Podcast. It is called Hanover Happenings. Like any podcast, it is free, and if you have a phone or computer or such device, you can go on there, search for Hanover Happenings, and we post about once or twice a month updates from select board meetings, interviews with staff and volunteers and community members, and so that's definitely something to check out. We also have email lists on our website that you can sign up for, and I have the links on this sheet, so you can go do that, and you can sign up to get updates in certain topic areas, so you get automatically notified if we post an agenda for a meeting coming up, so you don't always have to be checking for things. There's a bunch of different departments for the town government that have different social media accounts, and many of our town meetings, such as select board meetings and planning board meetings, are streamed thanks to Junction Arts Jam, CATV, and those are actually available on YouTube. And so if you do want to watch those meetings, you can do that as well. For example, if you don't find my podcast episodes long enough, you can check out those meetings on YouTube. The second way that you can sort of get involved, and of course, these are all kind of summaries and simplified things, is working or collaborating with the town of Hanover. So we work with a lot of different organizations that some of those organizations do things that we don't provide directly, such as social services, which is pretty common in New Hampshire, where we contract with about a dozen different nonprofits that provide certain types of social services that we don't provide directly. But we also work with tons of other organizations on a pretty regular basis, and so Vital Communities, if you've heard of them, is a great example. Hanover Improvement Society is a great example. And so there's lots of ways to work with the town. You don't have to be a town employee or a town volunteer necessarily, because we partner with organizations on a lot of different project areas. Number three is there's many ways to volunteer and be appointed to different positions in the town government. So we have many boards and committees that are here tonight that you'll get a chance to meet a little bit later, and we have vacancies on some of those boards and committees, and in about a month or two, we're going to be doing a big push to get more volunteers involved in the town government. So those, of course, usually are multi-year terms, require a little bit of a longer-term time commitment, but there's also lots of boards and committees that do things on a regular basis, such as on Election Day or a cleanup day, where you can volunteer for one or two days or three days or four days. So there's lots of different ways to get involved. So there's lots of different ways to get involved through that capacity. You can also run for office. And we're going to hear from some folks doing just that in a little bit tonight. Of course, that takes a little bit more of a time commitment as well. But it also can be a really rewarding experience, obviously, to run for office or to be in an elected position. Though it is certainly not easy, as I'm sure everybody who has been in office can attest to. But can be very rewarding. And of course, number five, one of the best ways to get involved is by voting on Election Day and coming to Town Meeting. There's a couple important points to note about Town Meeting. And so there are really two different components to Election Day. There is the ballot voting, which for most of us who voted in other states is what's going to feel a little bit more familiar. Right, you go to the polls, you fill out your ballot, you hand it off, and you leave. That's only the start of elections in Hanover and in a Town Meeting form of government. That is from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Hanover High School on Tuesday. However, some, a lot of fun stuff starts at 7:00 p.m. And that is called the Business Meeting. The Business Meeting is where the budget, all the articles that approve the budget, our union contracts, and a lot of other business goes in the Business Meeting. The ballot typically is for the election of certain positions and for land use and zoning-related articles. That's the kind of basic breakdown. And it's important to participate in both of those. Any registered voter is a member of Town Meeting. So to participate in Town Meeting, you just need to be a registered voter. And there are some links about how to find out how to register to vote if you aren't registered to vote currently. There are different forms of Town Meeting in New Hampshire and throughout New England. Hanover is a traditional May Town Meeting. So a lot of towns have Town Meeting in March. We are not that. A lot of towns also have what is called an SB2, which was a Senate bill, too, where all of the elections are done on the ballot. Hanover is not that either. So we are a traditional May Town Meeting with a Business Meeting that again begins at 7:00 p.m. Absentee voting is allowed by state law on the ballot portion of Election Day, but not at Town Meeting. So you cannot vote absentee for the Business portion of Town Meeting. At Town Meeting, the person who runs the show is the town moderator, who is not able to be here tonight and would probably do a better job than myself at giving an overview of some of these things. But that is the person that you will see. Jeremy Eggleton has been the town moderator in Hanover for some number of years. Four or five, okay. More than I've been here, okay. Participation at Town Meeting is guaranteed to voters who, Hanover residents who are registered to vote. And at periodic times, in Hanover Town Meeting often gives the moderator discretion to allow participation periodically throughout Town Meeting from non-voters. And usually that is reserved, for example, for department heads who do not live in Hanover but are asked to speak to questions that might come up on different warrant articles throughout the meeting. There are many rules that do govern participation at Town Meeting. It is meant to be open and accessible, but it is run like parliamentary procedure. And there is actually another handout on the back table there, is a message from the town moderator with sort of how some of the rules and procedures are at Town Meeting. So if you want to check that out to just familiarize yourself a little bit, that is definitely something that you can do. So Town Meeting has a pretty long preparation timeline and agenda. There's sort of two different tracks. One of those tracks is all of the stuff that shows up on the ballot. And most of those run through the town's planning board and planning office. So you'll get a chance to meet folks that are involved in that a little bit later. And that is sort of one track of items. The other track of items are the things that show up on the Business Meeting. And those are primarily, but not exclusively, related to the town's budget. All of those go through multi-month processes, either at Planning Board or Select Board, for people to see drafts of what is being prepared, to comment on them, for there to be public hearings. And then ultimately, for the Planning Board or Select Board to actually vote. And I'll show you what that looks like in a second for the articles that do wind up on the warrant at Town Meeting. Additionally, items can be added at Town Meeting by any member of the public, collecting a certain number of signatures by petition. And you can add a petition warrant article to Town Meeting as well. And there's a bunch of dates. We're kind of past the dates of adding stuff. But that's another way that things, that's the third way that things can make it onto the warrant at Town Meeting. At Town Meeting, that body can only act on items that were warned properly in the warrant. So you can't necessarily bring up an item at Town Meeting that wasn't on the warrant, other than sort of advisory-type, sometimes recognizing people, you know, an employee who retired or things like that. But you can't add cost items or things like that at Town Meeting if they weren't warned, because that means the community didn't get a heads-up that that item was going to be discussed. There can be certain amendments that can be made to certain articles at Town Meeting. But there are some limitations within that as well. And Jeremy, our moderator, is great at walking folks through all of that. So the second to last thing here is the Town Report. So this is also available electronically. And this beautiful photo, or sort of collage of paintings, was from the Ray School. A couple of us were there doing a little bit of planning for Town Meeting. And we were all kind of taken by just how beautiful some of the artwork was. Personally, I'm very partial to pine trees. So a couple of these really spoke to me. And so this kind of ended up on our cover here. And of course, we have a really great photo of Hanover Fire Department on the back. And there's a lot of great stuff in between. So when you, this is available electronically. We do print a certain number of copies out. But obviously, I think we clocked in at over 300 pages this year. So we try to limit that a little bit. We do have copies available at Town Hall if you do want them. And you can find them at hanovernh.org/townmeeting. When you open this up, there's a whole bunch of information in here. I'm not going to walk you through every single page. But a couple of things that are important to bring your attention to. So we've got a list of our employees and when they started, which is kind of cool, because we have a lot of really long-serving employees who've been with the town for a very long time. Makes me a little bit nervous as the manager. We have many retirements coming up. But we also have a lot of people with amazing expertise who do work here. The yellow section of the pages is the Town Warrant. So the two sections here are the ballot and the Business Meeting. And you will potentially note that some of the language can be a little bit hard sometimes to parse. And that is because often the language is prescribed by the state of New Hampshire. When you get to the green section, that's got a little bit more information about each of the different warrant articles. So if you have a question, for example, about something, you can pull up to those explanation documents. And there's a paragraph or two for each of those that was either approved by the Planning Board or by the Select Board to go in here. And when you are looking at them, you can also find, at the bottom, each of them shows the vote that was taken by the Planning Board or by the Select Board that added that item to the warrant. So that is their opportunity to sort of weigh in. And at Town Meeting, the Select Board does speak to these items as well. As you go through the rest of the Town Report, there are reports from departments. There are financial statements like the audits. And there's budget information. There is a whole bunch of different stuff in here. So we don't necessarily expect everybody to read every single page, though. There is going to be a quiz, so if you do, you'll be in great shape. But there is a lot of important information in here. And again, there's also, you'd be surprised, this is actually a summary of the longer documents like the budget. So there's a lot here. There's a couple more resources that you can go online to find. So I mentioned hanovernh.org/townmeeting. That's got a bunch of information about Town Meeting. You can also find the Hanover Happenings Podcast by searching for that or going to hanoverhappenings.com. You can learn how to register to vote at hanovernh.org/vote. You'll probably pick up a pattern here. You can find more about the budget at hanovernh.org/budget. And there's a few more links if you want to learn more about how Town Meeting works in New Hampshire or learn more about stuff that is at Town Meeting. So before I wrap up, I just want to make sure to thank, and maybe we can give a hand to the Dartmouth Civics folks again for putting this together. I really appreciate that. And appreciate Rocky for hosting us and all of you for showing up. I think some of, I recognize many of you as volunteers in town. So you probably know more about some of these topics than I do, but also some new faces as well. So appreciate everybody here and watching, learning a little bit about how to get involved in this direct democracy form of government. We've all heard all of the quotes. I'm sure there's a great Churchill quote for all of this that I probably should remember and have prepared for this. But it is really important that all of you are engaged and involved on an ongoing basis about everything that happens in town. Because if it's not you, who is it? So thank you again, everybody, for participating and coming out tonight.
I no longer have a mic up here, but welcome Kiara Ortiz to the stand. She is our VP of Dartmouth Student Government. And she's going to be moderating tonight's panel. And we'll have the candidates come up as well. Thank you so much.
Hi. I know who you are, but I'm Kiara. Thank you for working with us. Hello.
Hi. Can everyone hear me okay? Wonderful. Well, as Bea and Armita mentioned, my name is Kiara and I'm the Student Body Vice President. I once again want to thank Dartmouth Civics, Nelson A. Rockefeller Center for hosting this candidate forum today. And thank you to the candidates for being here and partaking in these questions that I'm going to grill them on. Just kidding, they're very kind questions. But first, I would love if we could go around, and I want you to tell me about yourselves. I want to tell me who you are, what positions you're running for, why are you running for them? How long have you been in the area? Just tell me a little bit about yourselves. Start in any order, if you want to start.
So can you hear me through this microphone? Great. Oh, now somebody's saying I need to move it towards me. All right, how about now? In the back, okay, great. So my name's Kari Asmus. And I've been in the Greater Hanover, Greater Atona area now for over 25 years. And I was explaining to somebody earlier today that I come by this passion for civics very honestly. My father was at a town council meeting the night I was born. And I think that just started my path here. Most of you, or many of you may know that I was nine years on our school board, including being chair. And then more recently, have spent nine years on the Finance Committee, also as chair, and now trustee of the trust funds. Those of you who are involved in the Conservation Commission have seen me there. I've contributed to bike walk. It sort of seems like, again, there's just sort of no aspect of town governance that doesn't have an interesting aspect to me. Besides my passion and long history with town involvement, I have to say that I was motivated to run because we've been seeing a lot of transition at Town Hall in our leadership, both administratively and on the Select Board itself. And I have to say that it was when I learned that another long-term Select Board member was going to be stepping down, Nancy Carter, that I decided, okay, that's it. I'm going to go to Town Hall. I'm going to put my name in. Because I feel that we're losing a lot of institutional memory, a lot of seasoned perspective. And I feel that that's just something that I could offer. So thank you for being here tonight.
Go down to the outside, maybe, and come back? Mix it up? Okay. Just trying to go crazy here. All right, my name's Jared Burke. I am the owner of Lou's Restaurant and Bakery. Been in Hanover since 2015. Prior to that, I was in the military. I was in the Marine Corps. I was a helicopter pilot. And used my GI Bill benefits to come to school here and never left. Came here with three kids and fell in love with the community and was really fortunate to be able to buy, come into a great business in the downtown. I'm on the Planning Board right now. I also served on the Master Planning Committee, or the Master Plan Committee, that wrote the master plan over the course of the last three years or so. And why I am running, I was coerced. Sort of. But seriously. You know, I've always, so throughout my life, I've found that doing things with purpose is really important to me. And I've found that, you know, having autonomy, you know, being, having mastery and having purpose are kind of the three legs of the stool that bring fulfillment, that make me happy. And, you know, that mission focus is really important. And so similar to what Kari said, you know, there's been a little bit of turnover. There were a couple of open seats. And, you know, having worked on the master plan for as long as I did, and being a downtown business owner, and having a really hard time buying a house in Hanover, I kind of felt like it was a good opportunity for me to step in and step up and serve my community and continue to live out that mission-driven, purpose-driven life that I seek to live.
Can everyone hear me back there? Yes, great. I'm Joanna Whit- you can't? How's that? Okay, I can speak up. I know I can. I'm Joanna Whitkam. I, let's see. I grew up here. I went to Richmond Middle School, Hanover High School, and went away to college. And after living in a number of different places, bike to school, that I could walk or bike, I do drive to work, but, and it was very fortunate to get into the market here when I could afford it, when it was more affordable than it is now. I've served in the community, I've always felt compelled, and like Kari, my parents, it was kind of a forced routine when I was growing up. It was Green Up Day, you always had to pick up trash, and that was just the part of the community service that was expected. Hope you all were out there on Saturday doing Green Up Day. I still have a couple of bags left, if anyone needs any. I chose to run again. I was compelled to run a number of years ago. This will be my fourth term, so I'm an incumbent. I chose to run again because I think there's more work to be done. I had the privilege of serving on the Sustainability Master Plan Committee with Jared and others here in the room. Very passionate that after 20 years of not having a master plan, that we actually have one now. We have one more chapter to write, which is a really important one. It's the Implementation Plan, or Implementation Chapter, and it's where kind of the rubber meets the road. How are we going to do all these amazing things that we identified, that we can do as a community, students, employees, people who live here, work here, and play here? How can we make them happen? How can we make things more affordable, or kind of more affordable? And how can we actually pay to do the things that we need to do? So that's why I want to run again, or that's why I am running again, and thank you for being here tonight.
We moved here to Hanover 40 years and four days ago. I was brought to the Upper Valley because of the Fair School of Engineering, where I have been steadily till now, but now reduced to half-time. We live in Hanover Center. That is, first near the parade ground, and now a little bit north of the parade ground. I have never actually done any official service to Hanover community, and it is high time, so to speak. I learned about this opportunity, and actually I did make it down to the Town Hall to register, so you will see my name on the ballot, but you will not see the name on the ballot of the people sitting next to me who are looking to the same opportunity, I believe. And shall I let them introduce themselves? Petra?
Hi, I'm Petra Sargent. I've been in the Hanover area for almost 14 years, a research associate at the medical school at the hospital. A few years ago, I got involved with the Dartmouth Conservation Group, Dartmouth Cemetery Conservation Group, which helps take care of the cemetery on campus. And I have been leading the cleaning and preservation sessions during the nice weather, and working with Mr. Sherman of the Parks and Rec Department with the upkeep, like about the trees, and mowing and stuff like that. I am very interested in cemeteries, and I care about them, and I try to incorporate service into every day. And so I'm trying to kick that up a notch by running for the two-year trustee seat on the cemetery board.
Thank you. I'm Kevin Canooty. I've lived in Hanover, I live in Atona. Lived in Atona since 2010. I moved here to be the Technical Director at the Army's Cold Regions Research and Engineering Lab, or CREL. I'm retired from that, from civil service. I'm also a retired Army Colonel. I went to West Point undergrad for a study in engineering, and I have engineering degrees from Berkeley and Colorado State as well. Most of my career has been associated with design and construction around the country, and/or teaching engineering, and also in research and development. Three years ago, I was walking through the Atona Cemetery on Memorial Day, just looking at some of the headstones from veterans. And as I was walking through, I noticed a depression in one area where there was a marker, but there wasn't a stone. I noticed it was a little lower, and it was fairly firm, so I dug around underneath, and I found a stone buried under about three inches of dirt. It was a flat stone, it wasn't intended to be vertical. And it was from a Civil War veteran from Atona who was awarded the Medal of Honor. I looked around at the other cemetery, the other older graves there, and there were a lot of broken headstones, just because of their age and the type of stone that was used. So I contacted the Parks and Rec Department, I contacted Mr. Sherman, and I talked to Asa Metcalf, who's in charge of maintaining the cemeteries, about providing assistance to help with trying to repair some of those stones, or do some other things to document some of the older cemeteries in town where there's a lack of documentation. There are some people in town, in the historical societies, who've documented the older cemeteries in Hanover Center, Atona, Greensboro Road, and Old Dana Road. The newer cemeteries are better documented, just because the record-keeping is more modern. But there's still a need to provide greater attention to those, I think. And it's not a fault of the town, I mean, the people who maintain the cemeteries are maintaining all the parks and all the public areas in town. So they have a very busy, full-time job, there's limited resources, and I think having a cemetery trustees, which are new positions in Hanover, will help provide additional attention to the cemeteries that they deserve, and that people are expecting when they buy plots in the cemeteries and expect the town to help maintain those. So on the ballot, I wasn't, hadn't been aware this was going to be on the ballot. I wasn't as on top of things as Mr. Frost was, but as Petra had said, I'm running for the one-year seat. There's a one-year, a two-year, and a three-year term positions. I believe that's to stagger the positions, so they don't have the entire committee vacate every three years. So this first position I'm running for, we've alternated, staggered them, so that we're not all interested in trying to run for the same position. So if you could write me in for the one-year position, I'd be interested in that, and I'd appreciate it. I did not get my information to Armita in time. I apologize for that. I have a little handout I printed out explaining my interest and background. It's in the back of the room. It's a half-sheet of paper, so if you're interested or know a little more about me, you could read that. Anyways, thank you for your time.
I should explain a little bit the mechanics of the voting this time. Kevin and Petra are running as write-ins, and it turns out that to vote for a write-in, you actually also need to fill in the dark oval. So we have prepared a sample of the corner of the ballot showing their names in positions with the dark ovals, and if you were wishing to, you could also put a dark oval next to my name, which you'll see printed there.
Very specific instructions. Thank you for the visual. But what I'm hearing when you're all speaking is that you have such a strong sense of place and belonging in Hanover or in the area, and I'm sure a lot of these people do as well. So the next question is focused on, how are you going to engage with residents who have this strong sense of place, who aren't running but want their voices heard in decision-making processes? How are you going to engage them, and how are you going to engage students as well? And not everyone has to answer the question, but we can go in any order.
Okay, I'll go first. So I neglected to say that I work at Dartmouth. I'm the head of campus planning here, and I have the opportunity, my offices happen to be downtown, and I actually happen to see a lot of people every day as I walk around campus, and so that's one means of engagement. I have, I don't have a podcast, and I probably won't have a podcast, so sorry, I just don't have that capacity. But I am, you know, I have been very involved in community service across the board, whether I'm swimming at Stores Pond, easily to access, I'm happy to come and meet with people. I am involved in a number of other organizations where people feel free to call me, or text me, or email me. So I'm available, and am very involved in going to athletic events. In fact, I have to make sure I leave here at quarter of seven, because I'm going to see Mean Girls tonight, Hanover High, if any of you, I think there's still tickets available, so.
Thank you so much. Just for time, we're going to keep to like 30-second responses. That was good. No, that was great.
I think I can cheat on this, because being the owner of a restaurant downtown, I talk to like a couple hundred people every day. And it's a pretty broad mix. So we, you know, I would separate our customer segments into locals, students, and tourists. And so I see a pretty broad range of people, and hear a pretty broad range of opinions. And then in addition, I have three kids in the school system, and so I'm always out and about talking to people.
So I have to say that because I've been around for so long, I sort of feel that, to a certain extent, people reach out to me, and I almost feel like I should have a column called Ask Kari, because, you know, I figured out the, you don't know who I am, but I sort of thought the next, an extension of that would be to have coffee with Kari, sort of once a month, whether it would be on campus or wherever. But I have to say that we often think about people who live in town, and there's a lot of people who don't live in town, and I have to say that those are a lot of the people that I tend to run into, and I think that that's an important perspective as well. So since I had 30 seconds, I think that's my, that's the high point. But I also have an Instagram account that I've been thinking, ah, you know what, I could use that a bit more to highlight what's going on in town and what's coming up, what questions are.
Well, I should point out that I do expect that we will be talking to the town staff quite a lot and working with them, so we will get public feedback that way. And it will be up to us to devise methods to make sure that people know how to get in touch with us on issues.
Hanover has seven or eight cemeteries, I can't remember the number off the top of my head. They're not all accepting new, putting new plots in and stuff. So there's different groups in town. There's people interested in the cemeteries that are accepting people, and then there's people interested in the older cemeteries that are more historic. I've had meetings with the Atona Ladies Aid, which is a very interesting group, and the Atona Historical Society is interested. There's people who reach out to things through Jeff at the Atona Library and the programs he's put on. I've talked to him about possibly doing something on what I've been doing with some of the cemeteries and identifying some of the historic graves in those. And then I'm sure, as Harold said, people will be reaching out as they're interested in modernizing or some of the changes that are occurring in other towns with our cemeteries as well.
A couple of months ago, I helped with the Hanover High March Intensive. There was a session about the Dartmouth Cemetery and issues surrounding death and dying. And so we worked with, I think, six or seven high school students during that week in the cemetery, and we also had some talks that they listened to. So I interact with students that way. I also interact with the local DAR chapter regarding the veterans in our cemeteries, and also community members who may have family members buried, you know, buried on the cemetery on campus.
Okay, thank you so much. And we'll head to another question, which you can choose a policy that you're passionate about, but tell me, I think we all love to know strategies you'll use to implement to ensure long-term planning, sustainable growth for the town, to make sure that once you leave, your project doesn't stop, that growth doesn't stop. Yeah.
Okay, I would go first here. So I would focus mainly on the downtown and around vibrancy and dense housing development. So I think, you know, we're going to talk a lot at town meeting about the budget. I'm sure there's going to be some heated discussion about the budget. But, you know, when it comes down to it, increasing the number of people who live in the dense downtown increases our revenue, right? So as the property values go up in the downtown, the amount that people are paying in taxes is also going to go up. It's going to make Hanover a place that people want to visit, so the businesses are going to do better, and it's going to make it a place that people want to live, and people want to hang out. And, you know, I think if there's anything that I can affect going forward, it's keeping and increasing the vibrancy of the downtown.
So I'm going to pick a different topic, not because housing isn't very important, but one of the things that is very important to me is our open spaces. And when I'm looking at the way the town is set up, I see that we have a Sustainability Director or Coordinator that's more in the planning department, and we have a new position called the Stewardship Position that's going to be in Parks and Rec, and we have Select Board members who are on the Board of the Tres Scott Lands, and then we have a Conservation Commission here, et cetera. And the way I see them functioning right now is more that everybody's kind of in their own silos, whereas if we got everybody out of their silos and into the same room, and started to think about managing everything more as one landscape, which it is, and how that might contribute to climate resiliency, which has then to do with our infrastructure, which then has to do with affordability. But I think that we could see a bigger impact for what the resources that we already have and that we already have dedicated. I just would also say that my spouse, who's a professor of environmental studies, is on the Hanover Conservancy Board, so we would also sort of have additional networking capacity in the town, should I be on the Select Board.
So for me, you asked specifically what policy that I would like to see go forward that would keep on truckin'. And so I'm like between the two of you, so there's the balance between investment in downtown, and I feel really strongly that government, or our government, can improve infrastructure and can enable things to happen. I think it's supporting, you know, our green infrastructure, water, sewer, roads, multi-use paths, sidewalks, making it safe for us to, for others to develop things like affordable housing, childcare. We have a government here that can enable these things, we can improve our zoning and subdivision regulations to enhance these things. I think we need to balance our conservation with our super investments downtown, so I'm all about moving forward in a balanced fashion.
The cemeteries really are a community memorial space, if you will. It's an unusual combination of public space and private memorial space. The fact that it's combined in that fashion is in fact a reflection of a sense of community within the people who put these places together. Possibly for most people, they are for most of the time just drive-by sites, drive-by bits of greenery, but for other people, at other times, and for many people at certain times, they become important memorial spaces. And it needs a community commitment to maintain the, if you will, the communal support for building and maintaining such memorial spaces. As for continuity, the Board will continue well after me, I'm absolutely certain. And so in a sense, I'm only a participant for a short segment of the time that these spaces must be maintained.
I am interested in making the records of the cemeteries more accessible and digitizing them, and I've been assisting with a project with Rowner Library to make that happen. People have spread out all over the country, and someone in California may have family members buried here, and people are looking for records, historical records, burial records, and I think it's important to make that available to everyone, and so that's something that I hope will last long after me.
As Petra said, I'm also interested in digitizing the resources and the documentation for the cemeteries. A lot of the cemeteries, we don't actually have a record of who's in the cemeteries. We have records of who owns the plots originally in the older cemeteries in town. So there are some people who've documented who's in those cemeteries, and there are some local people, there's a gentleman in line who's done a lot of work with Find a Grave and putting photos of headstones on that website. But digitizing all the resources, having aerial photos that are linked to the plot dimensions and everything else, so we can properly locate where the different graves and plots are, is something that I'm, is really what I'm most interested in doing at this time.
Thank you, everyone, for, excuse me, for letting me badger you with some questions. We are now going to open it up for audience question and answers. If you have a question in the audience, please feel free to raise your hand, and a member from Dartmouth Civics will grab you a microphone. Don't raise your hands all at once.
In the Sustainability Master Plan, one of the favorite words is vibrant downtown. And certainly in the 25 years I've been here, the downtown has become less vibrant, although it's good for eating. I can't even buy a pencil in the town anymore. What do you think vibrancy means, and where do you hope it will go?
I guess that's for you. Yeah, I think this one's for me. Okay, so your first question, what does vibrancy mean? To me, when I think about a vibrant downtown, I think about a place where people can go, they can find a parking spot, get out of their car, walk around, run into other people that they know or don't, find a pencil, find the things that you need, and it be a place where you go for entertainment, for convenience, and enjoyment, right? A place where you socialize with other people. It's, there's a gravity to the downtown that makes you want to go there. And I think what some people experience and maybe have experienced in the last, I don't know how many years, is some of those stores that provide that convenience have gone away. And some of that is, you know, West Lebanon and strip malls and kind of changes in the landscape, a lot of that is e-commerce. I don't think that we have nailed what the future of a downtown like Hanover is yet, and I don't know that anybody has. Again, e-commerce has upended many things, many stores, where, you know, you could buy those essentials, and... know how many years, is some of those stores that provide that convenience have gone away. And some of that is, you know, West Lebanon and strip malls and kind of changes in, in the landscape. A lot of that is e-commerce. I don't think that we have nailed what the future of a downtown like Hanover is yet. And I don't know that anybody has. Again, e-commerce has upended many things, many stores, where, you know, you could buy those essentials. And I think Hanover lacks a little bit of that gravity. And I'm not 100% sure how to get that back. I think getting more people to live in the downtown and close to the downtown is probably the best. When somebody walks down from their apartment and goes in and gets a coffee and then picks up a, you know, Mother's Day card, and then, you know, a present for a birthday that they're going to, like, those are the things that get people into downtown and to stay. And, and I think we need to continue to work on how we enable that, how we enable entrepreneurs, how we lower rents and taxes for small business owners, entrepreneurs, and how we make it easier for a young veteran like me with a family to be able to move to Hanover and not have to make $300,000, which is about what you have to make in order to afford the median house in Hanover right now. So, so I hope that answers your question.
I just wanted to add that I think another component of vibrancy for our downtown is to be looking at our government structures, that we need to continue to recognize how important the Howe Library is to our downtown. How many people come because of the library? Also, you know, our town hall, which is known as the municipal building, is the generator of a lot of trips. The town also owns some different properties nearby in that block, and I wonder to what extent that could contribute to our, to that aspect of downtown. So governance, public services, as well as commerce. I think that you really need to think about marrying those two and making sure that all aspects of those are healthy. Post office as well. How many of us have had great conversations in the lobby of the post office?
And, you know, a stool needs three legs, and I think the one that we haven't talked about is Dartmouth. You know, we need to be sure that we're engaging with students and employees and getting people downtown to make sure we, we're serving the needs of our students as well as the visitors that come here. You know, so it's, it's all of these, it's these three things. It's really, you know, our businesses are, I mean, who doesn't love the Howe? And, and Dartmouth.
I, I think there need to be three vacancies on the select board, so we could all be-
Okay, I think we'll do one more question.
Hey, I was curious just about the dynamic of traffic, parking versus a truly a walking type of town, a pedestrian-friendly town, maybe a little biking. But I'm really curious about, you know, in Boston, I got to see massive, massively busy streets shut down from traffic, and, and it works. I'm just curious where you all stand on that and what your vision for, you know, pedestrians might be.
Can I go first?
Yeah.
So Boston, Copenhagen, Montreal, they're amazing biking and walking, biking and walking places. I think Hanover should be an amazing place to walk and bike. I think that, I think we have to balance it because we don't have the population that we need to have downtown yet. We still, all of, like, how many here drove? I know Jenny didn't because I saw her on her bike, but-
I biked.
You biked? Okay, Kari biked in for Aetna. I didn't bike in. But I think that it's, it's, it's a fine line, John. I think that we, we have to figure it out. And I think what, kudos to town staff and the Hanover Bike-Walk Committee for trying stuff. You know, the pilots of shutting down the lane on, in front of the post office, shutting down the turn lane in front of HOP. I think that, I think those are really good things to test. Sometimes it takes longer than, you know, a couple weeks to test. But I, I think we, again, I go back to balance. And I don't think as much as the work that we did in some of the planning documents and some, a lot of people were like, get rid of cars, I'm not quite there yet. Because I've, I've also seen Church Street in Burlington, Lebanon Mall, sometimes it doesn't quite work, so I'm not there.
So I guess I, as somebody who is a lifelong cyclist as well, and who loves coming into town on my bike so that I don't have to worry about parking, I realize that that's not really a convenience for, or realistic model for everyone. But I have to say that when I think about Hanover, and I have to say, I think we've all seen wonderful walking streets and would like to see that model here. But when I think about some of the other places, they are, have bigger commerce areas surrounding them as opposed to residential neighborhoods. So I just have to say that one of the things that I think we need to be very careful of is doing things that then has unintended consequences for, for the residential areas that are so nearby. So that's another aspect that we need to balance.
Two, two things, John, and I appreciate the question because I think it's really important. So, so the first is, last summer, I, I decided to bike with my two boys from my neighborhood, which is the Dresden neighborhood up by the elementary school, into Hanover to Ramontos to get a slice of pizza. Terrifying. It was five o'clock, you know, you go on the multi-use path, that was fine. And then you go through Dartmouth, and it's like, you can't be on the sidewalk because that's not allowed. So you have to be in the street, and there's cars like trying to go around us. And, you know, my then-nine-year-old was in the back, and I'm like, he's going to get run over. And then you go through the green, which is fine, and then you get into downtown because the HOP construction had already started. So I'm on Main Street, like, with dump trucks on either side. And I'm like, this is not designed for this, like, clearly not set up for this. So that was a moment for me where I realized, like, you really have to think about how people are moving into and out of the town, and when they get into the town, how they're moving through it. And I, I just, you know, we have sidewalks, we have crosswalks, those are great, but I, I don't, they're not set up the right way currently, and I think we could do better. And then the second thing is on parking, so this is something I hear all the time, is there's, you know, I, I don't come to lose because there's never any parking. And that is important to me, right? Because I want people to come. So there's 700 parking spaces in the downtown. There's like two, or maybe more than that, 250 street, street spots and about 500 in the garage. There is not 700 cars parked in the downtown at any given time, like, except for, you know, a few one-off situations. I park in the garage every day, and it's like half-full most times. There's tons of open spots in the garage. But if I ask people who come into a restaurant, do you know that there is a garage? My estimate is eight out of 10 say no. They have no idea that, that the garage even exists. The way finding into the garage is, is just not good. Even if you know it's in that vicinity, it's really hard to find because the signs for the garage are like behind the building. So we, we just need to be a little better about thinking about the customer's journey, right? Something that business people talk about, like, if I'm a tourist and I'm coming into town, how am I getting into town? Where am I going? What am I looking for? You know, you have three seconds to tell me what signs you see, and I guarantee they're not going to find the parking garage. So we just need to do better at using the resources that we have to make it easier for people to come into the town and use the town and enjoy it.
Okay. We can do one more question with super speedy responses.
Hi, this is a question for the three candidates, especially in honor of Dartmouth Civics. I wanted to ask you how, what your, your vision of, you can go, Kim, go ahead. What your, what your vision of sharing town with Dartmouth students? We have had, very recently, in the last couple of years, a great example of, Nico, can I call you out? Of an opportunity for Dartmouth students to get involved with our zoning situation and being able to increase the height, particularly along West Wheelock. So that was an opportunity, and he's graduating. But how do we keep that interest so that we are all together with Dartmouth Civics and such on more than just candidate night?
So, so I think Joanna hit it-
Free Krulas.
Yeah, Joanna hit the nail on the head when she said, you know, we need to focus on Dartmouth when it comes to downtown vibrancy. We, we have to figure out a way to get half of our population to be involved in the town. And I think what Nico has done has been great. You know, last year, the, the town voted on bringing back the West Wheelock District, and it passed mostly on, on Nico's account. And those are the types of changes that, that we need. I think, I think bringing people onto our boards, whether they're voting members or just, you know, non-voting members, is super important. But from structure comes behavior. And if we don't have that structure, if we don't have those positions that, you know, we need to figure out how to fill, then we're never going to get those people into our government and involved in those types of committees and boards and situations.
Okay. So I guess I was thinking back to our town manager's description of the five different ways for students to be, well, not just students to be involved, but way for anybody to be involved in town governance. And it starts from, you know, a very intense involvement to just voting on Town Meeting Day. I was going to say, as somebody who attended college quite some time ago, when it wasn't quite understood that because, that you were a resident of the town and you did have a right to vote, I found myself as a college student explaining often, but I'm surprised I still need to explain that, that even though students are only here for four years, that's actually quite a, a good stretch of time compared to how often everybody moves these days. But that even if you go, you know what? You represent most likely the next cohort that comes in. So your voice is very important. Even if you're not here to, you know, reap the benefits, those who come after you will benefit. And so whatever level of time you have to give, as the town manager explained, there's probably a place for you. And so I would just encourage more opportunities like this for people to understand what those options are, because clearly the town needs everybody giving whatever they can. That's, that's what's going to make our, our town vibrant.
And I think a very, a really good way to continue, it actually was Dave, David Millman, when I ran for office last time, who really like mobilized the students and geniously, you know, vote for one even though there's two, you know? There's some term for that, bullet voting or something. But David brought in other students, and I, and I see Nico and others, the civics group, you, you're here, make sure that your legacy is, is, you know, pass on your knowledge and pass on your connections and, and join the Bike-Walk Committee. Or, I mean, as, as Alex said, there's a lot of vacancies. I mean, there, we know that Kevin's up for reelection in a year. There's cemetery commissions, there may be subcommittees.
I haven't even gotten elected in a year.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. But I was just thinking, in a year, I was trying to think of, and, you know, the, the select board, there'll be, you know, opportunities to run next year. So there's, there are plenty of opportunities, and I think that, pass it on.
Okay, well, I want to thank everyone for attending, but also would like to give a hand for our candidates here. So I want to thank you so much for speaking and mingling afterwards with anyone who's interested. So there'll be an open house from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., so anyone can pry and badger them with questions, but also learn about why they're the perfect candidate. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.